And invisible with liberty and justice for all. I'm glad, hold on.
Okay, Olivia Minchero, here. Vito Campanelli?
Here.
Unifred Rodriguez?
Here.
Shannon Johnson, well Shannon Americhak called and will participate remotely, I believe. So Shannon, Americhak, Dubasek? Okay. Sharon Anderson, here. And George Torres.
Good.
And when I say that, I'm sorry for the regular meeting if they're not on now. I just want to be clear.
Oh, okay. All right, public comment?
I do not have any. Let me, I'm just gonna make sure, okay?
Okay.
So, public comment, there are people on, so we'll go ahead and read this and then we'll see if anyone has comments, if that's okay? Okay, good evening, for anyone joining the meeting via telephone, you will automatically appear on our list of meeting attendees during public comment, the meeting moderator will call out the Erie code and last two digits of your phone number in order they appear in the meeting. At that time, if you wish, when the digits of your number are called, you will be able to make a public comment. Please press star six to unmute yourself, if you don't say anything, when your number is called, we will wait five seconds before continuing on to the next number. Anyone wishing to make a public comment will have three minutes to speak, after the three minute mark, it will be alerted that your time is up and you will then be returned to a muted state. And you will then be returned to a muted state. Anyone joining this meeting must remain muted outside of their designated speaking time. Anyone joining this meeting must remain muted outside of their designated speaking time. And for anyone using Google Meet, And for anyone using Google Meet, please check the chat box from moderator's instructions on making public comment. please check the chat box from moderator's instructions on making public comment.
Number ending in two one. Number ending in two one. You now have five seconds to make a statement. You now have five seconds to make a statement. I'm sorry, Erie code seven oh eight, number ending in two one. I'm sorry, Erie code seven oh eight, number ending in two one.
Well, that's it, okay. Well, that's it, okay. Okay, so no more public comment? Okay, so no more public comment?
Okay. Okay. Going down to closed session. Going down to closed session. Now the board will move on to close the second session, because now the superintendent's evaluation person to Now the board will move on to close the second session, because now the superintendent's evaluation person to section two C, one of the Open Meetings Act, section two C, one of the Open Meetings Act, by ILCS one twenty dash two C one. by ILCS one twenty dash two C one. Looking for motion to go into closed session. Looking for motion to go into closed session.
I will make that motion. I will make that motion.
And I'm sorry, what time is that at? And I'm sorry, what time is that at?
At six oh eight. At six oh eight.
Six oh eight, okay, Vito? Six oh eight, okay, Vito? And I'll second that. And I'll second that.
Olivia. Olivia.
Hello. Hello.
Olivia Minchero? Olivia Minchero? Yes. Yes. Vito Campanelli? Vito Campanelli?
Yes. Yes.
Unifred Rodriguez? Unifred Rodriguez? Shannon Johnson, Dubasek? Shannon Johnson, Dubasek? Sharon Anderson? Sharon Anderson?
Yes. Yes.
George Torres? George Torres?
Yes. Yes.
All right, so we're going into the library? All right, so we're going into the library?
Into the library, uh-huh. Into the library, uh-huh.
Okay. Okay. Now we're going, right, so I'll call me? Now we're going, right, so I'll call me?
No. No. How did I start? How did I start? Okay. Okay. I didn't know. I didn't know.
So, and? So, and?
No. No. I, I couldn't go on here. I, I couldn't go on here. Are we going to the library? Are we going to the library? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Library, right? Library, right?
Sure. Sure.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, George Torres, I knew, I was just, I knew it was coming. Oh, George Torres, I knew, I was just, I knew it was coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
She should get it. She should get it.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you. We're gonna go through this and we got straight. We're gonna go through this and we got straight. We need to take that one. We need to take that one.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, one more. All right, one more. Yeah, let's. Yeah, we have that whole answer. Yeah, we have that whole answer.
Even though it's funny, but yes, yeah, so now somebody did it, they can hear us, so. He had a ton of fun, he could be there till king or campers, so. Yes, yes, they were here. Yeah, the guy wasn't even very very honest.
Hey.
Now, now, I'm going to give you the flight, which we had a talk about.
Can you help me find the one that has the attachments?
Check it.
I just want to break this. I'm sorry.
This cabinet is brought to you by Burlington Store, Elstred One, John Buller's contract, and donated to a charity.
Thank you.
I'll take your word for it, I'm just kidding, trying to get the taste. You know, when they were reporting up to the city?
Hey Chris. Where's everybody?
Close session.
Oh. Hi.
We are live, just so you know.
Steve. Steve Spencer. Sorry, I didn't turn it on. Oh, okay, thank you Sharon. I mean, I stopped it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, thank you. Thank you so much. And uh, this was just the open close, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Those fancy gloves, you know?
Yeah.
You had that part. That for you, enjoy the glove.
Yep. Take the screen time. Got to me, final.
My hair so odd, I think that all the hair, you're all day, I double flee. Are you?
Good, how are you?
Cause I got, I noticed that you have a very free for forty years.
Really?
Yes, it's how.
What do we need to do there?
Well, I think, I think this is hard.
It's funny, cause focus on my mom.
I was born as a baby.
You need to change this. Oh shit.
For Ryan Kaz, I got to say it's. It's maybe air like you.
There you go.
It's amazing how big in the morning.
There is a.
What?
How are you?
There's no guarantee. Never. Shout out to Aunt Abby. All natural.
So. So. Do you like it?
Yeah.
Yes, that's really what matters most.
Not as high. Not how I've heard of seven years.
Yeah. No. Like here once, when I was first born. And then. So.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to return to open session.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, seven o'clock.
I'll make that motion. Olivia.
I'll second.
Okay, Unifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Unifred Rodriguez? Yeah. Uh, Sharon Anderson? Yes. Olivia Quintero? Yes. George Flores?
Yes. Alright.
Shar, Shar.
Oh, Marge, I'm so. Hi, Marge, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Uh, well, so Marge, we're voting to um, return to open.
Okay, I, I won't vote on that.
Okay.
I, I, I'm here, I'm here for the seven, I'm here for the seven o'clock meeting.
Okay, perfect, that didn't start yet, we're just concluding this one?
Okay.
Okay. So roll call is um, I'm sorry, so you're adjourned.
Right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn at seven oh one. Line of motion?
Oh, I can watch.
I'll second that. Shannon?
Oh, well.
Unifred Campanelli?
Yes.
Unifred Rodriguez? Yep. Uh, Shannon Johnson, absent, Mariposa, absent, Sharon Anderson? Yeah. Olivia Quintero? Yes. And George Flores.
Yes. Alright, motion passes.
You're the bottom.
Alright, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at seven oh two PM. Please join me for, for the passage of allegiance.
As my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and ever.
Call the wrong.
Olivia Quintero? Here. Unifred Campanelli?
Here.
Unifred Rodriguez? Here. Shannon Johnson? Um, Shannon did call and say that she was not able to make her meeting, she said no. Uh, Mariposa?
Here.
Sharon Anderson? Here. George Flores?
Here. Read enough communications? Shaw, do we have enough communications?
Um, nothing other than the four yeah.
Okay. Alright, moving on with uh, superintendent's report then.
Yeah, I got a couple things, um. I wanna recognize uh, Olivia Quintero for, um, we, she is donating with, with some family members, uh, for meals to some needy families and we're fortunate enough to be able to utilize uh, one of our parent liaisons to be the connected individual to help get these meals over to the uh, the families, um. The individuals, you know, are, are grateful and I definitely just wanna say thank you for taking the initiative on uh, celebrating this with some of our families and, and it's a great gesture just right before the holiday. Um, and I do wanna give a little uptick on the uh, COVID numbers, I do this every Friday and, and I just wanna share what they were today. And, and there is a, a decrease while they're still very, you know, high and not safe, at least they are coming down somewhat. And the uh, Lions uh, zip code is at a little bit above fifteen percent. Berwind, which encompasses Digni and, and uh, uh, Forest. Gosh, Forest.
Forest. Forest.
Okay. Is at a sixteen percent. Brookfield is at twelve percent and La Grange, uh, which encompasses McCook is at seven point nine. Not hitting numbers by any means and, and as a reminder, the metrics we're trying to look for are five and lower as well as the uh, uh, new, new case rate per one hundred thousand being less than ten or lower per one hundred thousand. So those are two metrics we're looking at regularly, but I wanted to share the percentages. And again, just uh, the amount of cases I've been handling um, for the district have declined. So I wanna say that the mitigation steps that we've taken related to allowing individuals the option to work from home when, when they can has helped. And uh, the custodial staff, you know, I gotta recognize them for the uh, cleaning and the maintenance of the buildings and, and helping to keep us all safe, so. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Chris, one quick thing, you might wanna keep an eye on those numbers because the COVID testing, um, it was taking like twenty-four or forty-eight hours to get your result back. Now it's like four days or more.
Right.
So.
Been a lot of testing before the holiday?
That's what they were saying, there was like a lot of testing being done, so it slowed down to a need of a stop after long.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, my mind keeps making uptick again.
Yeah, and, and that's why when we look at the numbers, we're, we're looking for a seven day or two Fridays in a row.
Yeah.
Where the numbers are below that five percent, so we do have a gradual process of that, so that, that, that should help in case those kinds of fluctuations take place. Thank you. Alright, moving on with public comments, sorry.
Okay. Chief, good evening. For anyone joining the meeting via telephone, you will automatically appear in our list of leaving attendees. Comment, the meeting moderator will call out the area code and the last two digits of your phone number and the number they adhere in the meeting. At that time, if you wish, when your digits are called, you will be able to make a public comment, please press star six to unmute yourself. If you don't say anything when your number is called, we will wait five seconds before continuing on to the next number. Anyone wishing to make a public comment will have three minutes to speak, after the three minute mark, you will be alerted that your time is up and you will then be returned to a muted state. Anyone joining this meeting must remain muted outside of their designated speaking time. For anyone using Google Meet, please check the chat box for the moderator's instructions on making public comment.
We will begin with area code six three zero, number ending in two three, you have five seconds to unmute. Next number is area code six three zero, ending in three three, you have five seconds to unmute. Next number is six three zero, ending in five zero. Next number is six three, area code six three zero, ending in six five, you have five seconds to unmute. Next number is seven zero eight, ending in zero three.
Good evening, this is Joanne Schaefer, how are you folks tonight?
Hi, Joanne.
I just wanna wish you all a good happy holiday before I make my comments. Eat lots of turkey and enjoy. Moving on, I have a question. Was there any board discussion regarding withdrawing from the township treasurer and stopping spending money for the legal bills regarding the Healy case? That's one question. Second question is, not a question, but a statement. I'm very happy that the kids are e-learning, although I will tell you, the shine is coming off. If you've watched the kids, or if you've watched them all along, you'll notice for the first month or two, all nice shiny faces with combed hair and nice little shirts on and stuff. And now the thrill is gone. Some of them are still in pajamas. It's getting old with the kids. I think they miss the educational aspect, the interaction with their teacher, and I think their teacher misses having the classes. The staff is doing a phenomenal job, I really appreciate it. And the fact that there is COVID in the building, we are actually protecting the children from getting it, so thank you for that. Question, did you folks realize that there's over two and a half million, two point five million dollars in bills again this month? It's still up there and it's not going down. And there are no kids in the building. Also, it's nice that we've not received uh, uh, any bills from our legal firm. They are not on the bill listing, are they just billing every other month? Just a question. Also, if you notice in the bill listing, Robinson School, I believe it is, is listed as a Brookfield school out of the Brookfield. It's a line item, so she might wanna take a look at that. And last but not least, do we have the qualifications for the new preschool director? Does she have kindergarten or preschool experience? Is she ready to step into such a magnanimous role? I realize that there aren't any kids in the building, but that's a huge role to fill, so I hope she has experience in at least kindergarten, if not several years in preschool. Thanks so much for listening. Enjoy the holidays, folks.
You too. Thanks, Joe.
Next is area code ending in seven zero eight, um, uh, area code seven zero eight, number ending in three zero, you have five seconds. Next is area code seven zero eight, number ending in four nine, you have five seconds to unmute. Next is area code seven zero eight, number ending in five four, you have five seconds to unmute. Next is area code seven zero eight, number ending in six nine, you have five seconds to unmute. Next, I'm going to go to names that are listed. The Alicia Greenery, you have five seconds to unmute. Anthony Michael, you have five seconds to unmute. Okay, if there's anyone else who wants to make a public comment, please add a comment in the chat section, I will then call on you at that time.
Shar?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I can't, I'm not hearing anybody.
Hi, Marge. I know no one is on, and I believe we just got the okay that public comment has ended. So the last one to make a public comment was Joanne.
Okay, moving on with year, six-day financials. The financials are attached to the agenda for the public. Moving on.
You know what, George? I'm sorry. I think there was someone that asked an explanation.
Yeah, it is. Similar to the statement that Ms. Chamber made, I, there were some questions as to why the bills were as high as they were last month. And I wanted to give you a brief synopsis of some of the high-end issues. I asked Sheila to give me a little synopsis of it. So we did have, and I'm going to give you some kind of the topic and then the amount. So we had Ladsy on the last one, which was for nearly nine-hundred-and-forty-four thousand. We had Blue Cross Blue Shield was paid for four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. Again, this is last bill month, not this one. Hall One, which is our landline company, they were for nineteen-thousand-seven-hundred. And that was backed up because they were sending their invoices to an old email. So that all kind of kicked in last month. The temperature devices were on for thirty-seven thousand. The Village of Lyons was on for forty-five-thousand-one-hundred, and that was for the paving of the parking lot project that we went in collectively. The bills for Odison and Stirk were at fifty-four thousand, and that was abnormally high because of the IT breach and as well as the regular district legal services. Direct Energy was paid last month at twenty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-three. Kelly Educational was on for fifty-three-thousand-five-sixty-nine. And then Illinois County's Risk Management for Workers' Comp and Property Liability was on for twenty-eight thousand. And of course, payroll was one-point-six million. So as Sheila looked these over and we looked at them together, we didn't notice, they just happened to be at the same time there, but there was nothing out of the ordinary or anything too distinctly different that I don't think we haven't discussed or expected. Thank you, Chris. Moving on, consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion.
You know, before we make a motion on the consent agenda, I'd like to remove H-E, the intergovernment, H-D, the Skyward confidentiality agreement, and the intergov, and then letter E, the intergovernment agreement. First of all, I have some questions. Second of all, those kind of issues, I don't believe belong on a consent agenda. Consent agendas for regular business, or if we had discussed this at a last meeting, then to put it on. So because I have questions on those two, I don't care if we vote on them after that or you put them down with the action items, but I have questions on both of those. So I guess I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda minus H-D and H-E.
Marge made the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Okay. Olivia Quintero. Vito Campanelli? Winifred Rodriguez? Marge, you have a second?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
And George Torres?
Yes. So you have the Skyward.
So now you're giving a motion to approve that Skyward.
The board report. She has the Skyward.
Yeah.
Then you'll discuss it because she had questions.
You know, I just want to speak up and tell you that it's extremely difficult to hear and understand you. It's almost as though you're in a fog. I just want to make that. I can hear Shar. I certainly, I heard Superintendent's report. But I have no idea what you just said and where we are on the agenda.
I think George is making a motion now to approve this Skyward.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve Action, now it became an Action of E, for Skyward confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So Olivia and Vito, second.
Discussion?
Well, I have, I have a question. I'm not opposed to it, of course. I think we need that. But it's my, this is my understanding that Skyward is going to provide the training and we can't copy it or give it out to anyone. Is this, I guess my question's twofold. Is this a standard agreement that we have with them for all the time or do we renew it every year? And then secondly, do we have a confidentiality agreement for our staff? There was some talk about that a while ago, but I'm not sure that that ever went through. So those are my two questions.
Yeah, and then I could, the confidentiality agreement, if you can give me some more detail on that, but I'll go ahead and answer the question about the Skyward agreement. It is not standard, to my knowledge. It has come about because of the, and I think this is one of those fortunate situations that have popped up due to the pandemic. But what we were doing was getting training, but we wanted the ability to record the training that they're doing remotely in the event somebody was absent or missed it for whatever reason, quarantining or whatnot, or just couldn't make it. So that's the main premise of this agreement. We asked if we could record their trainings, and they said you certainly can so long as we get this agreement approved. And so that marks where that came from.
Okay.
I think Shar was.
Yeah, the confidentiality agreement, Marge. So that, I believe, those all went out. So what we have to find out was, are they, you know, do they, are they one and done or do we have to do that yearly?
Okay, okay. That, that, okay, I don't need, I mean, I don't need an answer. You can put that in Bud because that wouldn't affect the vote on the Skyward. And it makes perfect sense to be able to, to have that on, on record. So if somebody was absent, they were sick, they would, they wouldn't miss out any training. That was my question. The one about the staff, you certainly can get back to me on. It doesn't affect this motion anyway.
Perfect.
All right, moving on.
Um, so, yeah, so Winifred Rodriguez? Marge Joubasak?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Quintero?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
George Torres?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on with Action Item E, intergovernmental agreement, West Forty, Alliance District One of Three, 2020, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve that action item?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
So Olivia and Vito.
Discussion, anyone?
I have a, I have a question. Is the one-hundred-and-fifteen-dollar-per-day fee, is that, have they raised that? Or is that the same fee we normally pay? And then I was wondering, I'm thinking we don't have anybody in, in West Forty. And I guess I would ask that question if we do. But I was, I was wondering if they raised, my main question was if they raised their fee to us for this year.
You know what? I don't know off the top of my head. Can I get, get that information to you?
Sure, that's fine. I mean, we, we need to have an agreement. I was just wondering about the cost.
Yeah, yeah, and Sharon had asked if we have anybody in West Forty right now, and we do not.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on.
Marge Joubasak?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Quintero?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
George Torres?
Yes. Moving on, Board Report. These are policies up for a first reading. They will go for a second reading at the December fifteenth regular board meeting. If there are questions on the policies, please reach out to Superintendent. Moving on with the action items. Action Item A, looking for a motion to approve the administration be directed to execute the following actions in accordance with current Illinois Truth in Taxation guidelines. Number one, schedule a public hearing on the 2020 School District One of Three tax levy request at the beginning of the regular board meeting on December fifteen, 2020, at seven P.M. Number two, direct the administration to make a copy of the 2020 estimated tax levy to be available for public inspection in the administrative offices at 4100 Gillette Avenue, Lyons, Illinois, no less than twenty days prior to set public hearing. And number three, to cause a notice of public hearing on the 2020 levy to be published in a local paper no more than fourteen days, more or less than seven days prior to the commencement of the public hearing in the proper truth in taxation format. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Okay, so Olivia and Vito.
The balance. Discussion?
Okay, Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Quintero?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Marge Joubasak?
Yes.
George Torres?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on, Action Item B. I'm looking for a motion to approve the performance goals for Superintendent's employment agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that. You have Vito and Olivia.
Wait, I have a quick question. Felicia, the last board meeting, we voted to table these. Do we need to like have a motion to bring them forward again?
Yeah, you can, you can, so the first, you can just do, this is the one you table. First, just do a motion to remove from the table. You guys vote on it, and then you can do this motion. So you didn't have, no one first or second this one yet, so just, I would do a motion to. Did they?
They did, yeah.
They did withdraw their motion. Yeah, you can withdraw your motion because, yeah, that's, that's, I didn't remember that. So, yeah, so you, whenever you put something, when you table it, you gotta remove it.
I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so now you just do a motion to remove from the table approval of performance goals. Read it that way.
Okay, looking for a motion to remove from the table the agreement, the performance goals for Superintendent's employment agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Well, second.
Okay.
Discussion?
That was Olivia and Vito?
Yes.
Okay, and we are on the throw call. Olivia Quintero?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Shannon Johnson?
Excellent, okay.
Marge Joubasak?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
George Torres?
Yes. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the performance goals for Superintendent's employment agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Vito and Olivia, okay?
Discussion?
Yeah, I have a question on that. Is Felicia there?
Yes.
Okay, when we had the discussion the last time, a question was asked, and we, was one of the reasons I believe we tabled this, was that you mentioned something about the performance goals needed to be student-based and measurable. I'm not sure measurable was the word you used. And we never got any more clarification on that. Has that changed, or do you feel that these goals meet the, meet the criteria of the State Board of Education? And then what I asked the last time that I never got an answer to was, who created these goals?
I'll be honest, Marge, I'd have to look at his goals now. I don't, I don't typically look at the goals or review them. So.
If I can answer somewhat of that, I think that I could be helpful a little bit on some of that information. Definitely the district improvement plan has, you know, an abundance of data and goals related to students. And what I'm looking to do is to accomplish that task. And it's a, it isn't measurable? Yes, when it's completed and you have the document that we posted on the website, that's tangibly measurable. The development of the instructional support system is another thing that, that would be tangibly measurable. Also, I was on a meeting this morning where we are working on a handbook for that as well, for communication purposes and whatnot. And then the development of the multi-tiered system of supports is also a very tangible, student-related. Again, a multi-tiered system of supports is the whole structure in, in providing students what they need at different levels, whether they're high achieving, and it's all data-driven. You know, one thing, all of these things are very strongly driven by data. And then the, the working toward the communication, you know, of the, of the social media, you know, that's the enhancement part. Working toward is, is the technology infrastructure language there, then working toward. Because these ones are a little bit larger in scope and, and developing along the way. And then last one I added, and, and kind of to answer simultaneously, who drafted these? I worked with Chad Watkins, Attorney of IESA, who does this for superintendents across the state. And, and we worked on this in collaboration. And I really encouraged him to add that sixth goal. Because we're living in this COVID environment, and I believe there's a ton of tangible, student-related items that go towards that, that you can see, and then we can present from the plan, the learning plan, and, and the different schedules and the different trainings that we've done for technology and otherwise. So then I guess that's my input on, on that, if it makes it a little more tangible to the minds of.
So Marge?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm looking at them now. So I remember I know what the issue was at the time. I was saying, what you don't want to do is have something where the goal will say, I'm going to make the district better. I'm gonna just make it a better, you know, something like that. If you, if it's something that's measurable, like he's explaining, then I think you're fine. The only thing, you just want to be able to say, there's some way for me to measure somehow whatever you're putting down as a goal. It seems like you're blaming that, so that seems fine. But that was what my point was. You just don't, you can't say, I'm just gonna make the district better.
Vague.
Okay.
Make something very vague where there's no way in the world for you to be able to measure, because what does that mean? So it sounds like he though has, you know, has something whereby you can actually measure it or be able to say if he's actually achieving.
Okay. Okay, that, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, that, and I just wanted to make sure that, because there was that discussion, that these were acceptable goals, that we weren't going to get bit on this before, you know, later on. And, but as long as, as long as you, you know, you worked on this and, and they're acceptable, and the attorney says they're acceptable, that, that answers my question. Thank you.
Hold the roll?
Okay, Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Marjubasek?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Quintero?
Yes.
George Torres?
Yes. Thank you all very much. I'm looking for a motion, action item C, I'm looking for a motion for improvement of learning content for Beatrice Lepay, the Russell Verlichhour education in the home of $95,000 for the program for year, school year, fiscal year 2020, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion.
I'll second that. Okay, so Vito and Olivia.
This is probably a dumb question, and I'm sorry, but do we have preschool going out right now? I mean, I know we're doing soon with the kindergartners, but preschool's a whole different...
Yes, we do have, and we've scrounged up enough devices to make it at A level. It's not optimal. We're still waiting on an order that really is, is just been made on June 4th. And, and we're all, we're, we're looking at other options, but we do have, between the families and the devices, we do have, there is some semblance, while it's not ideal, it is going out. And there's a lot of delivery and, and providing packets and, and different resources. And remember, it's play-based, so we are making sure that the standards are being adhered to and, and working and trying to measure that somehow through the devices and, or some type of technology input. And I could certainly ask Kim West to provide maybe an update, a little more detailed update on that for the board, if you'd like. And I could have that sent out maybe next week or early sometime.
That would be great, because our preschool is predominantly kids are struggling, you know,
Yes.
with their letters and numbers. It's not necessarily, let's have fun and go to preschool.
Right.
Different kids need a head scare.
Okay, I, I have a, everyone, I have a question.
Go ahead, Marj.
Oh, okay. This isn't, this isn't something you haven't heard me say before. I looked at the resume again, and so now this new position for Beatrice would be the 15th different position she's held since 2010. Now, I granted the last two are here. Here's my concern. Our grant needs to be redone or reworked or resubmitted this year. She has absolutely, according to the resume, unless you guys know something I don't, no pre-K experience at all. She's got special education, she's got ESL, she's got, she's got those qualifications that she did. But absolutely none for pre-K. And so I'm, I'm just a little troubled that this was the best candidate for this position. When, and I know this is a COVID year, but work still goes on, and I know that still, there's still stuff that needs to be done, that we didn't possibly have an internal candidate or another candidate that would fill this role. Rather, again, giving a, a, a administrative position to someone who simply, by her own resume, does not have the qualification for, for that position. I'm done.
Hold the roll?
Hey, Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Marjubasek?
No.
Sharon Anderson?
No.
Olivia Quintero?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
George Torres?
Yes. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn at 7:39 P.M.
Can I, can I just add, just before you adjourn, I'm going to state my concern again. The audio is very, very difficult. I know why now people are complaining. It's very difficult to hear you. It's, it's muted or muddled, the voices are. And I don't think that this, this meets the requirements for the open meetings act. And I just want to say that publicly, so it's, it's on tape.
Okay, I'm going to repeat myself. I am looking for a motion to adjourn at 7:40 P.M. Oh, I'm sorry. See, with the mask on, it's harder.
Could we not get those microphones back in here and use them like we were doing out there?
This, this was an intervention, and, and we had the phone before, and we tested this, and we tested the microphones. And those microphones created so much feedback that it carried on for about 10 seconds. We, we actually recorded it, and they showed it to me. This one proved better when we tested it. So I'll, I'll have to brainstorm with technology and see what, what other interventions we could maybe attach, some type of a different microphone to this that might be able to pick us up better. But we can certainly try something new.
And maybe, maybe just another location. But, but I, I really, I really do, I really see why the concern is that people are up at arms. And, and, you know, and, and this COVID thing, I think that the meetings are going to be an issue, and it's not going to go away anytime soon. So I hope that you will work on something, because it's not good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Vito did a first to adjourn at 7:39?
No, well, that was 7:39. I repeated myself with the, without the mask. So for a 7:40, Vito, um, put motion out, okay. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn at 7:41 now. Do I have a motion?
I will make that.
And I'll second that.
Hold the roll?
Marjubasek?
Yes, I heard that.
Oh, motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I heard the motion, yes. Are you asking me to vote?
Yes. Yes. Yes, vote to adjourn.
I know, but are you asking me to vote?
He did, so he voted, he said motion to adjourn at 7:41, and...
I heard that, and I heard that, and I heard this, I heard, I heard him say that. Yes, I did.
And then Vito and Olivia first and seconded, and now you're up to vote to adjourn. So Marjubasek?
Yes.
Okay, Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Quintero?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
And George Torres?
Yes.
Thank you.
You too, thank you. Do you have a motion?
Chris?
I do.
You can have like microphone.
You guys have a really nice Thanksgiving.
Last Thanksgiving, girls. Winifred.
[crosstalk]